I'd like to call this meeting of the city council, the City of Palm Beach Gardens, to order. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's go to call a roll, please.
Mayor Javelin.
Here.
Vice Mayor Levy.
Here.
Councilmember Russo.
Here.
Councilmember Primoroso.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Okay, additions, deletions, and modifications. There is one announcement. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor and Council, and everyone in the audience. Just like to extend to you an opportunity to meet and greet the new insurance consumer advocate, Sharon James, out of CFO at Waters office in Tallahassee. She has become the citizens' voice in Florida for all insurance-related matters regarding citizen insurance, car insurance, homeowner insurance, flood insurance, all those different types of things. Being newly appointed, she wants to move around the state, meet and greet people, and find out what their concerns, issues, ideas, or thoughts are on insurance. She will be here, and we will host her October the 12th here at City Hall, 5:30 to 7 o'clock. You're invited to come out and meet our new insurance consumer advocate and talk to her about any issues that you may have at any level with insurance throughout the state of Florida. It's a good opportunity to let your voice be heard, so I just wanted to make that announcement.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Next is the Items of Resident Interests and Board and Committee Reports. David?
Well, we've only got one week.
We only have one week, so...
But we did two events.
Right. We did a lot.
So we did actually do a lot. The first event was the Chamber of Commerce gathering of the 10 mayors that the region covers, and of course, we only care about one mayor, and that would be Eric Javelin. You thought I was going to say Karen Calonke, didn't you? Eric did a very good job, and I will tell you, our city stacks up very well against the other cities. Unfortunately, Eric only had three minutes, which he did a wonderful job in explaining everything that's going on with the city as far as new businesses coming in and where we are with our tax rate and where our city is going in the future. It was very exciting. As a matter of fact, if I didn't live here already, I'd be considering moving to Palm Beach Gardens.
Thank you, David. I took a little more than three minutes, but...
I know, but I wasn't going to tell everybody that.
It's not everybody else.
It's not everybody else, yeah. And as a matter of fact, the other event that we went to is the Mayor's Literacy Lunch. Eric and I went to that. All of us were at the Chamber of Commerce event. Eric and I went to the Mayor's Literacy Lunch, and I will tell you, it's very important that all of our mayors in the United States be literate. So, no, this is a wonderful program which promotes literacy, not just among children, but also among adults, which is a bigger problem in the United States than you would think. There are more people that are illiterate, and it's hard to identify illiterate people because they're generally embarrassed about it. But there is help available, and we got to meet the Amicore volunteers, which are basically kids right out of college that volunteer a year of service, live at below-poverty wages, and help people learn to read. It's a wonderful program. Literacy is the key to better jobs, better employment, more money, and more happy and stable future for our citizens, so I was very happy to go to this lunch. One of the things that the city participates that's coming up in October, I'm not exactly sure of the exact date, is the Read for the Record. Read for a Record is the event where adults, usually members of municipalities, go and read to children, generally speaking, under five. The five of us will do that, and this year's book is called Not Norman, which apparently is about a goldfish. So, we're all looking forward to that. We all did last year. Marcy even wore Bunny Ears for Bunny Cakes, the book that we read last year. And with that, I'll turn it over.
Sure. Well, I guess I just checked two of the things off my list to say. In addition to that, when you were talking about the chamber, they did again ask if we were going to have a representative at the Chamber Government Affairs Committee. Their meetings are held the second Friday of every month, and so maybe we should talk about that at the end of the agenda and just pick somebody to go, somebody, then maybe an alternate. I also, in response to comments made in the past, I did a little bit of research in regards to the Central Boulevard and Hood Road area, and because of that, we did receive plans, and I think our city engineer received information as well. The four-laning of Hood Road is scheduled for the latter months of the year, and that would go west of Brigger, so it would be just west of Brigger, close to the Turnpike. It would be, yeah, four-laned almost to the Turnpike, not quite. The expansion of the I-95 bridge, that work is well on its way, which is a good sign. A few people asked about the turn lane eastbound, and for some reason, the Hamptons didn't, when we had the Hamptons on the project, on the agenda here, the county never asked for additional right-of-way, and they're a couple of feet short for the dual left and the right turn, so they are looking for a couple additional feet to make that intersection, a whole intersection, to have a second dual left and a right turn lane onto Hood Road from Central Boulevard. So that one is not scheduled until 2018 unless, for some reason, they can find the additional right-of-way sooner and do it more quick. So, that's a little bit disappointing to me because that turn lane's necessary right now. There are people that are just sitting there waiting for the one guy going straight, and there's a lot of cars that want to turn right, so it's very unfortunate. I'm disappointed in why they didn't, you know, allot for additional right-of-way because we have to go to the county for traffic approval for every concurrency reservation, so they had a perfect opportunity when the Hamptons came about, but that never occurred, so unfortunate. I just wanted to kind of let you guys know that because I know a lot of people are asking about when turn lanes are going on, you know, when the construction's happening. I know people in the aisles have asked in the past, so I wanted to let you guys know. And that's about it.
Joe?
I just wanted to say that Eric did an excellent job at that chamber. Eric, I was very proud of you, and you did a great job representing the city, and it's just sad to see that that wasn't going to be your last mayor's speech there, so...
Well, I'm sad to see this is your last year, too. We're all taking swanstones.
Anyway, that's all I have.
Thanks. No? Okay. Just quickly, I was at the MPO today, and I queried Nick Uren about quiet zones and the sealed corridor. Kim Belaney was there as well, and she, it was really funny, you know, they talk about sealed corridor like it's a real thing. It really isn't.
No definition.
No definition for it.
There's no section, no details, no anything?
No, no. It's funny, but it's just a name they made up, frankly. But I did speak to them about funding. Eventually, you know, the South End has funding in place, the North End does now, too, so you should know that. And they are working with FEC to identify what SSMs, supplemental safety measures, are needed. If the most expensive ones are needed, which is four quadrant gates, they will pay for them, but we will pay the maintenance for them going forward. I got a ballpark estimate of about $4,500 a year for each one of them, where I think we have three. So I think it's well worth it to get horns to stop blowing. So I just want to let you know that it is moving forward, and we will get a quiet zone eventually, and we will not have to pay for the initial cost of...
I have a question.
Sure.
In regards to that, did they talk about permitting that? Because obviously, we have, like you said, three intersections that are in our control. However, there are, you know, six others that are intersections that are joint through Jupiter, Palm Beach Gardens, and other municipalities along with the county, so it's their control. Are they permitting? Are they requesting the quiet, are they taking care of the quiet zones? Is it something that the city has to permit through the county? And what is the process? Because I think the whole entire North End, as a whole, would like to have quiet zones.
Oh, sure.
That's very clear.
That's very clear.
And whether we, as a joint effort with the North, with our neighboring communities, need to go through the permit process, or the county is doing, and I guess my question is, that still hasn't really been clear in any discussion. Have they talked about it?
No, they didn't talk about it. I think as we get closer and closer to it, we'll get more clarity on all of this, but I just want to let you know that it's not going to come out of our budget with the, of course, the maintenance is going to go up. I also talked to them briefly about a uniform maintenance agreement. The cities have been asking for a uniform maintenance agreement that we all will sign together, so...
We're working on it, and also Treasure Coast.
Yeah, because right now, everybody has a separate one, you know? I don't know what Lake Park's paying, I don't know what, you know, nobody knows. We'd like to have it all uniform, so they're working on that as well, so... Okay, all right, let's move on. Next comment from the public for items not on the agenda, and I have, I think, six or seven cards here. As I call your name, you come up to the microphone, and you have three minutes, and the first one is Elliot Koenig. Elliot?
Thank you.
Elliot, could I have your name and address for the record?
Elliot Koenig. I live at 3620 Gardens Parkway, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida.
Thank you.
I've lived in Palm Beach Gardens for over 25 years. I opened a store in the Gardens Mall in 1988 when the mall opened. Presently, I live in the gardens, I said, at the Landmark. We have 166 condos there, over 300 residents, and it's amazing how many times these people come to our place to help and save the people who are at a problem. My wife herself had a heart attack, and they were there in less than five minutes and saved her life. I don't normally use a cane, but four months ago, I flipped on my flip-flops and broke my hip. Shouldn't wear flip-flops. I'm never going to wear them again. I broke my hip and my femur, and they were there 10 minutes, took me to the hospital, and I can only praise them no end. I'm here because I want to make sure that they are compensated properly and they are taken care of properly because without them, they're gold, and I wish you would just take care and make sure that they're competitive with all the surrounding areas. Of course, there's rumors going around that some of them may leave for a better pay at another community for comparable job, and that shouldn't be. We're a well-funded organization, and they should be paid well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elliot. Appreciate it.
Next is Matt Baker. Matt, you know the drill.
Matt Baker, 220 Isle Verde Way.
Thank you.
You know, again, similar to what Elliot said, I'm here for the same thing. It's, you know, it's amazing. We live in a beautiful city, call it home, and it's a city that you guys have all had such a hand in making a beautiful place for all of us to live, and we certainly thank you for that. You know, it's spectacular as we watch all the developments that are happening, that have happened. There was the slowdown during the recession time, but it's picked back up, and you see all the developments going on. You see our property values climbing back up from the depths of where they were during the recession. The economy continues to grow and strengthen, and, you know, at the end of the day, things are good, you know? Things, they look up. We've got a beautiful city, it's financially fit. You look at the reserves when you look at the budget documents, and we have, you know, plenty of money in the reserves. It's not, you know, there's no issue with reserves. What I can't figure out is why such a great city would be bypassing a group of people that are so important to the fabric of our community. You know, and it's clear that there is a problem as you look out today and you see all these shirts out here. There is a problem. It's not, you know, last week, we were here, we spoke, we listened to the news, you know, we heard the numbers that they spoke about in the news, you know, there's a real problem there, and there's a disconnect. And I can only imagine that it's misunderstanding, miscommunication, that there's something that's being lost here because it seems so elementary that there are people that do such a vital job for our community, and they, for 10 years, for 10 years, they've worked here, and they make no more than the person coming in tomorrow. I mean, a little more, a little more. I mean, you know, just such a small amount. It's really, it's really sad that it's like that for these people, you know? They give so much to us, and I sincerely hope that, you know, the council will direct the city manager in the way that we should be acting and taking care of these people. I think it's vital and important. You know, since the last council meeting, we had a short time to begin getting the word out and sharing, you know, the issues of this public safety, and I think we started to make an impression in the community. And, you know, I know Abby and I are really committed to continuing down that path and letting people understand what's going on because it just seems, it just doesn't seem right. So I, you know, hope that you guys understand, and again, thank you for all that you do. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mayor. Next is Abby Baker. Abby? Welcome back.
Thank you. Abby Baker, 220 Isle Verde Way. So, we did leave last week, and we thought, what can we do to kind of bring awareness to an issue that's so important to us? So I reached out to families. So tonight, you have three generations. That's Miles's great-grandfather, Miles's grandfather, father, great-grandfather. And I'm representing a lot of the families here in the gardens. We went home and we started a website, Palm Beach Gardens Fire Medics Fans, and because we're fans of both, the gardens and especially of our fire medics. They've done a lot for my family now, everybody knows, more than we ever planned to share about that. But I think it's important to realize and to keep these people here because they are the reasons that we're here. It all happened right in a row, even my grandfather, and they're amazing. We all know that, we all agree on that, so I hope that the issue of their compensation is quickly worked out. Tonight, I am representing many families. Several hundred have already emailed you through the site that we set up, and so I'll speak for them because a lot of them are making dinner, doing homework, and can't make it tonight, but hopefully, next time if we need to, I'll bring more families with me. So we are expecting that the garden stations to be fully staffed on each shift, not adequately responding, but fully staffed, so that the dedicated rescue professionals may fully respond to emergencies calls from community members. We expect elected officials to immediately come to agreements with the garden rescue staff to retain, respect, and support them. We expect elected officials to properly allocate and manage current tax dollars to make sure that this happens. And we expect a mutually agreed-upon resolution to the contract to be in place between the city and the gardens firefighters, EMTs, paramedics, before the current contract expires on September 30th, 2015. So I will continue to do the best I can to reach more families, bring more awareness, and research everything myself as well, and make sure that the facts that I'm going to now start requesting and looking into are accurate, and I hope you do the same. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. You know, we only have one issue here tonight, and other than to pass the budget, and so, you know, normally, we don't allow public expression, but, you know, it's okay. Ron Price? Name and address for the record.
My name is Ron Price. I live at 124 Vieira Drive in Palm Beach Gardens. I'd like to thank the council for being available by email, and specifically David Levy and Marcy Tinsley for answering the email that I sent. You're passing a budget, and you don't have a contract on what you're going to pay. That's a comment. I've just never been able to do a budget when I wasn't sure what I was paying out. I've read some articles, heard some news reports, but I haven't heard any of you tell us what you want to do to fix the problem. Now, from what I've heard, the problem is compression, as they mentioned previously. People in the middle apparently aren't getting paid adequately. I would like to hear from you guys what you think should be done in general terms to fix the problem and how you're instructing either the city manager or the negotiator to take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. (applause) Next. Next is Ricky Grow. Grow? Grow, sorry.
Ricky Grow, president of Professional Firefighters and Paramedics Local 2928. Address is 2328 South Congress Avenue, West Palm Beach.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. As some of you may know or may not know, this local represents about 2,000 active and retired firefighters across this county. Thank you for taking the time to listening to our people and the citizens. At the last meeting, questions were raised about where our fire medics rank in comparison to other fire medics in the county. I believe that Councilman Russo stated that he would like to see them in the top five. We have generated a chart, which we have copies, if you'd like them to share with you, that shows that your employees comparatively the lowest-paid firefighter/paramedics in the county. Take, for example, Ashley, who spoke last week, who has been here 10 years and only makes $1,500 more than a brand-new firefighter/paramedic. There is no plan for them to progress. How does a person in their career here, after 10 years, know how they're going to get from step to step? Every other department in this county has a progression plan for their employees. I am very concerned that not fixing this problem, you're going to lose good, qualified employees to other agencies with a better lucrative package. We urge you to fix the problem. We're willing to sit down at any time, any place, to negotiate the contract and get it done. Thank you.
Thank you, Ricky. Name and address for the record.
Samuel Meshburg, 118 Via Palacio at Marisol.
Get a little closer so we can hear you.
118 Via Palacio at Marisol.
Thank you.
I have two suggestions for the council. One suggestion is that you take direct responsibility for fixing the compensation compression that's occurred over the last dozen years since the STEP system has been removed. And the second request that I have is that you, as a council, review the actual pay that your fire medics have received, those fire medics that have been hired since the last 12 years, since the STEP system has removed. I request that you actually review their annual pay so that you're fully aware of how this compression has affected the people who have come in over that period. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the cards I have. I think the city manager has a statement and a presentation he'd like to make.
Just chill until I tell you. Yes. The city and the IFF negotiations, both teams declared an impasse a few weeks ago. Since that time, both teams have come to the table to continue the talks in attempting to negotiate this contract. So it's not over. So you're getting information that we're not addressing compression, when in fact, our plan does address compression. We may agree or disagree on the compression issue and how to address it, but it's being addressed. So we're still in talks at this time. Regardless of what you hear, you know, I've sort of remained quiet about this thing because it's not my practice to negotiate a union contract in the public nor in the press. It's just not good management, and it's not the best way to reach agreements, in my opinion. However, since the union decided to take this to the street, and I will normally wouldn't discuss this in public, I'm prepared to do that now since I'm sort of kind of left with no option at this point. The council wants to hear, and the public wants to hear, and I'm not sure how many of you have actually read the city's proposal that has been put forth. We take great pride in this city for our citizens of all levels of employment, in all departments, in all operations and activities that we provide, competitive salaries, comparable salaries with like jobs, and we give some pretty darn good benefits in order to help retain employees. We do salary surveys constantly where we're checking salaries and how competitive we are all across the board. It's important to us. The process that we used recently to address compression at all other levels of employees in this city was the same process and plan that was presented to the union representative. It has worked and is working in the PBA, the Police Union Representatives. The approach that we're recommending has been working well with addressing compression and giving pay increases. It has worked well with the SEIU, which we just implemented, which is the blue-collar workers in Public Works and Utilities. It's worked well with them, addressing compression, and that same pay plan has been approached, philosophically, has been presented to the IFF as well. It is a pay plan and a process that is working. It's successful. We worked out the differences between our approach and what was necessary to reach agreement with both PBA and the SEIU because we worked together to do that. We're still prepared to continue to work together to address the same issues, and if you've been told we haven't addressed those issues and compressions, you've been informed incorrectly. We have addressed that. Another thing, for those of you that get up and tell us of the great operations and the services that you receive from our employees in the fire department, we would expect no less. It's not about the quality of service or the individual that you see here tonight. It's not about that at all. It's about fair and equitable compensation, and we agree with you. We need to address compression. We need competitive salaries, there's no doubt. We're on agreement with that. It's how we get there, and right now, I brag about the rescue and the quality of care to everyone who will listen to me because I see the results of the work that these men and women do. I understand them. So it isn't that we're really adversaries, we're just trying to get to the right answer at this point. There's some information that I'm sure you don't have that I need to share with you so that you understand the challenges that we're faced with in trying to get where we both want to go. It's just not that easy. You can't just write a check. These people here, along with me, are responsible to all the citizens in this city regarding their taxes and their services and every other decision that we have to make. Even the decision on what their pay is has to be looked at at future and how that impacts the city financially and how that impacts other negotiations in the future. So it's just not a matter of fact of going to the reserves and writing a check for recurring expenses. It doesn't work. You deplete your reserves, and then you can't afford to pay what you've already started. So that doesn't work. What we have done is we've taken that pay plan and slotted employees to address the compensation, and then put 2.5% on top of that for the two years. Third year, we left out so that we could talk to them and work out what is it we need to do in the third year to make this thing work even better. It wasn't until recently we got a response to that, very recently. But it... But a brief background, which you already know, we had the big economic turn down, the local government stopped paying. We froze pay, everyone else froze pay, and yes, compression occurred. And now that we have the financial increased stability, or sustainability anyway, we're trying to recover in every aspect, in the police, in the SEIU, in general employees and fire. We have to feed the whole family, not just one part of the family. People would have you believe that the answer to everything is the traditional STEP plan, and that by leaving the city of Palm Beach Gardens and going to a STEP plan city, all the problems are going to be solved. But if you look at what has happened, in Boynton Beach, they froze their STEP plan in 2009 and it continues to be frozen. West Palm Beach froze it for three years, five years in Riviera, 2010 and 11, I guess it was frozen, it got zero increase in Boca, Del Ray, STEP plan was, has been frozen since 2009. As a result of using those reserves to be able to pay their obligation, the firefighters now are negotiating in the county, they're looking at starting salary, the starting salary reduced by 18%. They're looking at a proposed contract of 0% increase in 2015, because they took the money out, the county chose to take the money out of the reserves and pay ongoing operating costs, and the money doesn't come back in. We want to avoid that type of a situation. Now, you will hear from the union that the firefighters and paramedics earn about $50,000 a year, plus or minus. According to our data, our records that we keep and are audited every year, the average pay of a firefighter is $55,318, as you can read, and for fire medics, $58,000. According to 2014 Wage Report, based on fact, Ms. Tarana, who got up and spoke at the last meeting and went on television, earned $62,000, a little different than what she said on TV. The average, also, when you look at another one who stood up and spoke, Mike Zingaro made $72,000, Rich Swan, he spoke, that everyone's being underpaid, he makes $88,000 a year. So, the fact or the idea or the concept that someone's telling you everyone's making $50,000, it's just not true. As a matter of fact, 40 out of 114 members, 35% earned over $90,000 in 2014. In addition to that, 27 out of 114 firefighters, fire medics, lieutenants and captains made over $100,000, from 150 to 106. Yet, the union would tell you they're underpaid. When you look at all of the firefighters, I'll take it. Where is it? I got it. This is actual salaries for 2014. And when we talk about you're making $50,000 or $55,000 a year, when you get to, just, have I lost control? Okay. When you look at the total wage, okay, my mouth is not working there. Go ahead. You can go on, this whole thing will be online tomorrow and you can go on it and look. But if you'll click back onto that and bring that link back up, please. Scroll on down. Ranges from $150,000 goes on down to $197,000. It goes on down into the $50,000s, yes. And yes, compression is an issue. And yes, we have addressed compression. The bottom of the range is coming there, right there. Now, the reason there's a, stop, right there. The reason there's a $29,000 and a $42,000, one of them's a fire code inspector and this employee just started recently, he didn't have the whole full year. So, the lowest paid W2 was $53,000. So, it's information for you to have. All right, next slide. It's important to remember, too, that with increased salary comes increased responsibility. Responsibility pays for the benefits as well. You keep in mind that if you were, if you're in this list of the 90s and $100,000 and you were hired before 2012, I think it was, you receive 99% of your salary and wages in pension. We have to fund that as well. It's not just that we have to fund salaries, we also have to fund pension. So, of those people that reach their pensionable age, which is 52 or 25 years of service, when they walk away and they retire, they walk away with a pension based upon, basically they'll get their entire salary for the rest of their life. We have to fund that, okay, through tax dollars. Next slide. Human members have been quoted in the media that they've been underpaid, like I said before. But when we compare ourselves with our data and we communicate to other municipalities on where they're at with their STEP plan, we're within the top five of every category. When you look at firefighter, fire medic, there are the minimum, midpoints and maximums of their ranges in those cities that we compare ourselves to routinely on a lot of different things. We started off in May looking at the salaries. We verified again in September that these are the numbers. As far as the minimum, midpoint and the maximum of our pay ranges, you can see the results were either number one or number two, firefighter, fire medic. Driver, engineer, we're at number three in the county, in these comparable ranges. Go ahead. Now, when we compare our lieutenants to other departments, station supervisors, which what lieutenants do, sometimes called captains, and for fairness sake, that's what we have done, these are the ranges we get from the cities that tell us we're number three or four, depending on maximum to minimum. Now, as far as the next one is concerned, which is our captains, which we're comparing to battalion chiefs from these cities here that we compare ourselves to, in order to be competitive in the marketplace, you can see we're at number four. We spend $120,000, plus or minus a year, training our employees to be the best they can be. We require more EMS certifications to work as a fire medic than any other agency in this county, and we surpass state requirements. We pay the cost, the city pays the cost for these employees to go to the fire academy for officer training and continual training on an annual basis to increase their skills, to increase their education, so that they can continue to give you the quality care that you need and you deserve. We're the only accredited agency in the county, and this is not an easy task. There's a lot of criteria that has to be met, and you have to prove a lot of things to the accreditation team before you can get the accreditation. There's not another accredited department. It's, go ahead. When you look at full staffing, the chief and I talked early on on budget this year, hard for you to believe, I said this might be the year, chief, for us to start adding some staff to the either-or stations. Let's take a look at it, get me some data. We looked at the data and we tried to see what, how many events and how many average calls per day in a 24-hour shift each one of these stations had, to see if there was any indication there that there was a need. All right, well, that didn't work out, so let's look at something else. So, maybe we're spending a whole lot of money in overtime and we're not realizing it to make up for this staff, the staffing at these two stations. That didn't seem to be the answer either. So, we went to the next step. All right, let's look at our response time versus the number of calls we have. Maybe we're not getting there in an appropriate manner. Maybe we're below our standard. We have to be there within 6 minutes and 30 seconds. And as you can see, the calls have increased in the last three years, and the time is virtually the same, from 6:13 to 6:15. So, that wasn't the answer either. The reason we were doing this is that we were talking about adding 14 additional firefighters, adding a very big expense to the city, which would equate it to the amount of tax reduction that was being considered this year, oddly enough. So, we didn't have the data to support our thought that perhaps we're in a position that we needed to do that. So, we couldn't bring that to the council and tell them that we needed another 14 firefighters. So, what we said was this, let's put money in the budget and let's get a consultant in here to take a look at staffing of all the stations, and the money is in the budget if it's approved tonight, to come in, take a look at the staffing, and have an outside agency take a look at it and tell us if we're right or wrong and what impacts this has. So, we're addressing that as well. Despite the claims of the union that we have high turnover or we're going to have high turnover, the city's had one voluntary firefighter resignation since 2012. We had to cut off the application process at 100, so that we could process the application process and get to the interview process. Otherwise, we would probably still be taking applications. And the idea, quite frankly, knowing how cities operate and knowing how plans, pay plans are generated, managed, it's hard for me to believe that a firefighter here is going to leave if they're making $55,000, $62,000 a year, whatever it is, and go to another agency and enter that pay plan in the middle of that agency's pay at $78,000 a year when there's already people there doing that. How are they going to not enter at, at the beginning of that pay plan, which already we've shown that we're number one at anyway? How much more than number one can you be? I'm not sure. So, I don't think that that is, is realistic. I don't think that's going to happen. I think that if we sit down and negotiate this thing in the correct way, we can come to an agreement on what those levels should be and where we should be in, as far as the compression is concerned. We also have an attractor here with Blue Cross Blue Shield. We have a lot of benefits, a lot of benefits that we pay for. Blue Cross Blue Shield Health Plan is one of them. It's unparalleled. The plan is just, they just won't write it anymore. We're lucky to have it. We pay a penny for the individual. They pay something, $116 or $220 per month for the family. It's been unchanged for years because I won't allow it to be changed, because that's one of the most important things that we can provide is a good health program for all of our employees in this city. We also have an onsite healthcare wellness clinic for all employees. The fire department is the biggest user of it, and it costs them zero to go to it and it costs them zero for prescriptions. We have a lot more than a lot of other cities and other counties would have to offer in the way of benefits. Speaking of benefits for your education, so you will understand, when we look at our percentage of payroll at the fire department and we add up all the salary and wages along with all of the other pays, it comes to about $9.5 million. When you look at what the benefits are in the way of retirement, health, workers' comp and taxes we pay, it's 69% of that. It's almost equal to the same amount that we pay out in salaries. That's a cost factor that we have to look at when we consider salaries and wages. It's just not that simple. Now, as far as the proposal is concerned, and the city's proposal to the union, in years one and two of the contract, we have proposed that every employee would get a 2.5% across-the-board increase. We're told of five years, obviously, for two years. In addition to that, they would get additional salary increases up to 14%, tolling $568,000 in just salary increases alone, and that's to address compression, and about $712,000 including pension and FICA. Firefighters and fire medics with nine to 12 years of service will get an increase ranging from 15% to 19%. For example, Ashley Tarana, I'm not picking on you, Ashley, would get an increase of approximately 15% under our plan, was about $7,500 increase. Ashley's a fantastic employee, I'm not, you were up there and you were visible, so I had to find someone. Year three, the contract, like I said earlier, was open to negotiate. Talk to us about what you think we need in the third year in order to make this thing In the union's pay proposal in years one and two of the contract, most employees would get an increase ranging from 14% to 16%. On top of that, they're looking at 4.55% in year three. That's about $1.1 million in salary increases and about $1.86 million including pension and FICA. Keep in mind that these are recurring costs and they go up every year. Under the union's proposal, 60% of the union, union members would be in the bargaining unit, would earn over $90,000 excluding our overtime. That actually means 24% would continue to make over $100,000 excluding overtime, 35% would be making over $90,000 excluding overtime. Go ahead. So, this is information I'm sure that you didn't have. What we have at this point is a hope. I hope we can get back to the table. I hope we can address the compression issue with what we have laid on the table with the system that we know is tried and true. I hope that we can address the third year to be able to help equalize whatever it is that we need to equalize to make this contract work for both sides. We're willing to do that. We're able to do that. We need the help and cooperation, the negotiating team to sit down, work with the plan and come up with a remedy. It's a matter of cooperation, it's a matter of trust, and it's a matter that we both have the same goal in mind. We just need to find one way to get there, one channel to get there. And that's my hope. Mr. Mayor, council members, I am done.
Thank you, Ron. That's very good information. I know you've all been listening. This is a difficult issue for all of us. We pride ourselves on our services in this city, as Ron said. We think we have the best fire, police, employees of all stripes in this city. We've, we believe that we've, their compensation packages have been fair over all the years that I've been here. All I hear about every year when we do these surveys is we want to be in the top five. And you saw right here that we are. In fact, we exceed that in some cases. Again, we're not looking to argue with anybody. I heard things like rumors, there's a lot of rumors out there. I think, hopefully, we've dispelled some of those rumors tonight and you will understand what our position is. You know, what Ron said about recurring expenses is very true. Sure, we have the money, we could take it out of reserves, sure, why not? But every time, don't shake your head, just listen, just listen. If we take it out of reserves every year to fund what you want, we won't have any reserves left. And there, and where will we be then? We won't, we won't be able to fund any of your demands into the future. So, what I'm asking for is your cooperation. You heard Ron wanting to sit down and renew discussions about the compression problems that you're talking about. He's willing to do He's willing to do that. He has figures on the table that I think that you, you could, you, you can start negotiating from. Be our partners in this. Don't be our adversaries. I mean, that's where we're coming from. We're not trying to, um, drive any of the great people that are out here tonight out of the city. We've got a great staff, we give great services, and we've heard so many testimonies about the lives they've saved. They've saved mine. They've saved others up here. It's, um, it's an emotional issue for many of us, including me. I hope, I hope you, you listen tonight and I hope you will, um, you'll respond in kind. We're not here to, to hurt anybody. We're here to get a fair contract. If you'll, if you'll work with us. Anybody else want to say something? Joe?
Abby, I want to jump in. You know, I, a couple of things. Number one, there's way too much emotion in this issue and I thank you for those emails. That's not helping anybody. Because the poor gentleman that said I didn't respond to his email, that's because I'm so busy deleting them all because they're all saying the same thing. And I apologize for not doing that because they're all saying the same thing. Excuse me. We've had a great amount of respect up until now, so let's not ruin it. Let me just say this, okay? And, and, um, the gentleman that said I wanted us to be in the top five, yes, that's where I want us to be. Both groups need to go back to the table and both groups need to take the emotion out. I mean, I love seeing yous all come. I mean, I have the greatest amount of respect for the, for the firefighters and paramedics who, who, who help us, who keep us safe. But, I'm going to ask both parties to go back because obviously, okay, both parties have their opinions on their numbers, okay? And I don't believe that either party is lying. I don't believe the, the union representatives have come and said something they don't believe is true. And I don't believe our staff has something they don't believe is true. But in the end, as I understand it, if we go to impasse, we're going to be making the decisions, okay? This council will have the ultimate decision if you go to impasse. And we're going to make a decision on the information that's presented to us, on facts, not emotion, but facts. But as I always tell every one of my clients before they want to go to court, okay, I always tell them if you're 100% right, you only have a 50% chance of winning. And that's the way this is with both parties. Because I'm going to look at this, I love staff, I love the fire and paramedics, but I'm going to look at this and make a decision based upon the facts. I'm going to be looking to find out, okay, whether you're in the top five or not, okay? And obviously, you don't feel you are. But we're going to have a presentation from our staff and your, from, from our attorney and you're going to have a presentation from your attorney. The odds of coming out of that and winning aren't good for either party. So I think, if at all possible, you have to sit down and you have to spend every bit of time to try and work this thing out. It's in everybody's best interest. And that's really what needs to be done here. And I ask yous to go back. Again, you've seen some of our numbers. I know your numbers are different. Share them. I'm sure that, you know, and again, I ask when parties get to, and it's not easy and I understand when you're in a negotiating situation, it's very bad. And obviously, we're asking you to go back to a table that you got up from not feeling good about. But I think you have to, to resolve this, you have to turn the page. And this is both parties. I'm talking to our staff also. You have to turn the page and start all over again like it was day one. And that's really what needs to be done. It's going to be in everybody's best interest, um, to get this thing done. And if you can't, well, we'll be here to, to solve it one day, but, you know. And then, Abby, you could bring in all the people you want to bring in. Um, and, and that's probably the time to do that. But I will tell you, the police did the same thing and we made a decision based on fact and not emotion. I mean, if it was based on emotion, you know, I'd give them everything. I mean, I'd give them all the money in reserve because, because that's the way I feel about them. But we have to make a decision for, for the, and be financially responsible. That being said, you know, we're willing to, I know our staff and this council's willing to do what we can do. We don't want to see anybody going anywhere else to work. And we want to make sure you're in that top five, as I said. And if my numbers are wrong, I'm willing to look at them when you'll get that opportunity to present them. Sit with our staff, show them. I mean, I don't know. Let's just hope it all works out. I mean, it's just, I wish everybody luck in this, in this, because I know you're going to continue to sit down and, um, let's hope you could come in with the yellow shirts in the not-too-distant future for the ratification of the contract. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, go ahead. First off, the important thing, most important thing is I honestly believe that our firefighters are the best in the state of Florida, if not this entire country. Um, I've actually gone out and trained with them a couple of times. Yeah, they throw me in bunker gear. They put me out in August in bunker gear with the jaws of life and had me rescue a dummy one time. I ended up with about three inches of water in my boots. I know that they have a difficult job. I know that they do a great job. Uh, they put me in a simulated smoke-filled room. I believe, A.J., you saw me out at the training facility over at Palm Beach County when we did the mock disaster with a terrorist attack. I know what our firefighters do. I know that they do a great job. I know that they train hard and I know that their, their main interest is protecting and helping the citizens of this city. I appreciate that. I also know that we have a council policy that they're going to be in the top five of pay in this county. I also know, and this is a fact, that the city has acknowledged that there's a compression problem. I believe that since the city has acknowledged that there's a compression problem and that the firefighters' union has acknowledged that that is the biggest problem, that we can get to a reasonable accord and solve this and negotiate it through. At this point, I don't think that our council needs to interject. I think we need to let this process go through. Like Joe said, if you can't come to an agreement, then we'll go to impasse and then we'll make that decision. I hope we don't go there. Everybody knows what the problem is. I think there are ways of fixing it. I've seen proposals from the city, I've seen proposals from the union. I think that this is the best fire department in, in the city and that you do deserve fair compensation to reflect how good you are, which means that I want you paid better than Riviera Beach. So, I think we can get there. I do think we need to have some patience, though, and let the process go through. And throwing a date, I know that the contract ends at September 30th, but we have gone beyond contract dates before. And I think that we can get this fixed. But I do want to take the right amount of time to get it fixed properly and for the, and in the future, you know, to make sure that we're not back here in three years with the same compression issue. But I do think that we can fix this. I do think that, that the city's got a starting place. I've seen your starting place and I understand from your union that, that you've made a major concession to the city. I hope that, that we can go ahead and run with that. So, with that said, I'm very confident that this is going to be fixed and that everybody's going to come away, maybe not ecstatic, but they'll come away happy and they'll, they'll feel like they've been treated fair. I know that, and we have a few police officers in the back, they vote for their contract at 96%. So I, I believe that we can get the same thing with, with the firefighters. And believe me, I think that our police department is also the best in the state and the county. And I'm going to bring this down to, to the public work employees. As a matter of fact, our finance department and every one of our departments are award-winning, including recreation. And I think that they all need to be compensated fairly and properly and at the top of where people are paid in this county. So, with that, I think my stance is pretty clear.
I'm not going to, um, say again what you guys had said. I agree 100% with what David said and with what Joe said. And it, it's a very tough issue, especially because it's, it's salaries, it's your, it's your livelihood and it's, it is, it's emotional. I'm a huge supporter of our first responders, our police and our firefighters, EMS. We heard a lot of testimonials last week. It was very emotional, very heartfelt, and I can totally empathize with each and every one of you. Look, my daughter's father passed away in an ambulance on the way to the hospital and I wish it was, uh, you guys taking care of him because it wasn't in Palm Beach Gardens. And I know with our resuscitation rates, I am almost positive that he would be alive today if, if, if he were here. So, I totally agree with what all of you had said. But it, we cannot make decisions based on emotion. We, we have to look at the numbers and I'm very confident that we can work together. We can, definitely, we all agree that there is a compression issue. We all agree with that, we've all said it. And we need to work those out. Again, we need to go back to the table, we need to talk professionally and, uh, work out our differences. I'm very confident we can get it done. We're very close, it sounds like, now that we all have all the facts on the table. And I, I look forward to, uh, next month seeing some good reports and I welcome you back because we love having you. I, I love having people in our audience, that's a great thing, but I wish it were under better circumstances. So I'm confident we can get this taken care of and I, I know we have in the past and I know we will again.
Yeah, all I really have to say is, just like Joe mentioned, you have to take the emotion out of these negotiations. I really haven't been through one of these before. We went through one previously when the economy was down, so obviously changes were made that everybody agreed upon. Now the economy's better, uh, there's a little more money coming in. We have to sit down the table and we shouldn't be fighting about dates or times or who checked whose schedule. Um, I think we just need to get to the table together, talk about some numbers, would figure out what might work over the next three years and then go from there. But if we're going to be fighting about all the ancillary items that aren't important and who's got what and who's doing this and who's meeting where, uh, I don't want to hear any of that crap anymore. What I want to hear is us getting to the table, talking about the numbers and where we can go and where we can find a mid-range point that works over the next two or three years. That's what I expect out of staff and that's what I expect out of you guys. And I hope that happens soon because I'm ready to get something done. Thank you.
Okay. I think we've all said our piece. Uh, we hope, um, we hope you take it to heart. Uh, we are here to, uh, solve this problem, not to make it worse. Believe me, we are. So with that, I'm going to take a short recess before we do our, uh, our, the rest of our Let's get back in session here so we can get out of here. Next is consent agenda. Chair, entertain a motion?
Move consent. Second.
Move in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Next is public hearings. Uh, we only have one, resolution, two, actually. Resolution 41, clerk, I'll read the title, please.
Resolution 41, 2015, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a tax levy and millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016. Directing the city clerk to forward a certified copy of the resolution to the Palm Beach County Property Appraiser and Tax Collector within three days after its adoption, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Okay. Do we need a presentation, guys? We've had one already last week. Do we need another one? Nothing's changed, Alan?
Has Alan changed something on us?
Nothing, nothing has changed. The only difference is tonight we have, uh, the resolution adopting the millage rate, uh, resolution 41. And then after that, we have the second reading of ordinance 12 adopting the budget. So if you'd like, I could go right to the required script.
Yeah, if you could put the required language up so someone can make the, the motion. Yeah, she read the title, but we need a, a motion.
Okay. I would like to make an announcement. The City of Palm Beach Gardens is proposing to adopt a final millage rate of 5.6871 mils, which includes a debt millage rate of .1371 and operating millage rate of 5.55 mils, which is greater than the rollback rate of 5.3354 by 4%.
Second.
Well, that actually is just an announcement.
Oh, yeah, that's the announcement. Yeah, we're doing the next one.
I would like to make a motion to approve Resolution 41, 2016, setting the final millage rate for fiscal year 2015, 2016 at 5.6871 mils.
Matt will, second.
It's move in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0.
I would further make a motion to approve ordinance 12, 2015.
We've got to read the title. We've got to read the title.
Oh, never mind.
That's okay, never mind.
Ordinance 12, 2015, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting the budget for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year commencing October 1, 2015 and ending September 30, 2016, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I would now like to make a motion to approve.
All right, David, I got to open the public hearing and ask for any public content, uh, comment.
How excited is he to get this thing done, huh?
We got, we got somebody who wants to say something.
Football.
Johnny Lyons, 1009 Diamond Head. In the 23 years I have been coming to these budget meetings and council meetings, I have never been to a budget hearing that somebody didn't get up and bitch about something. And I want to congratulate staff and council for doing such a wonderful job that you did not irritate, apparently, anybody in the city, and I don't believe it. Thanks, guys.
Aren't you glad that's what happened? Thank you. Thank you. I think that deserves a, man. Okay, anyone else? Can't top that. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and take another motion, please.
I would like to finally make a motion, after three attempts, the third time is the charm, to approve ordinance 12, 2015 on second and final reading, adopting a final budget for fiscal year 2015, 2016.
I'll second.
Move in seconded, all in favor? Aye. Passes 5-0. Hallelujah, hallelujah. That's your final budget, Joe.
Can we go back? Joe really wanted to see the presentation. He was in the restroom, but he wanted, he wants to hear the whole thing and go over it and.
You guys are eating your pizza.
I think anybody here could do it.
All right. Items for council, action, any discussions? No? You wanted to do something.
Did you want to discuss?
Oh.
You want to go to that? As a mayor, right?
I don't know. It's up to you, you want to go?
Actually, I've been going to it, so.
Oh, okay. I said nobody's been attending.
I haven't attended in a little while, so that's probably why. I'll start going back again.
David's back in charge.
I haven't, I haven't attended in the last few months just because. But, you know, you remember, I was there when you came on the airport issue.
Yes, that's right.
Yes, I was there because I normally attend that meeting.
That's correct.
We're talking about the North Chamber.
Right, it's Friday morning and.
Friday morning at the PGA, whatever it is.
I nominate David as the rep and Marcy as the, the backup. How's that?
Sure. And we both can go, as long as we don't talk.
Both go.
We're going, yeah.
Uh, I got a question, since we're all together here. Uh, I'm going out to California, um, next month, it was a family thing. And, uh, I'm planning to take a little trip down to San Diego because my wife wants to see San Diego. She's never seen it. Uh, I'm planning to stop by La Jolla and, uh, and visit the Scripps complex there. I just wanted to let you know that. And if I speak to anybody there.
You don't want us to pay?
No, I'm not. I don't, no, no. No, it's all on my dime. It's all on my dime.
Make sure you go by the Coronado Hotel, it's really neat.
No, 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 I would, I just want you to know that. Is that okay with you if I?
Yeah. Yeah, just go by the Coronado Hotel, really is, it's really neat.
Yeah, well, that's why she wants to go.
See the Coronado?
Coronado, yeah.
That's where I stayed in June. It's, you might not come back, it's pretty spectacular.
I know, it's pretty spectacular.
Eric, you can take it out of your stipend if you want.
I could take it out of my stipend. Oh, yeah. He's not here tonight, Joe.
We don't have a stipend. We don't have a stipend, but anyway.
What stipend are we talking about?
Yes, right, exactly. Yeah. Okay, um, that's it. Anything else?
No. Motion adjourned.
Well, we got to see attorney report.
Attorney report? No, yes, no.
All right, now, you, you're on, Marcy.
Motion adjourned.
Second.
Move seconded, all in favor? Aye. We are adjourned and we have a budget.